All right, let's call this meeting to order. We could stand for the pledge, please. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. How's everybody tonight?
Good. How are you?
Good. Introduction of those present, please, Kristen.
Yes, this is Kristen speaking this evening. As you all heard, this meeting is being recorded. It'll be submitted to PEG TV, so please remember to introduce yourself before you speak and make sure to direct questions and comments to Mike. Members in attendance this evening, we have Mike Beecher, John Malcolm, Bob Jones, Jessica Van Orte, and Rich Hewlett. Others in attendance, we have myself, Kristen Powers. Then we have Frank Nelson, Mark Frost. I think it said Harry is here. Julie Mack, Nancy Morlino, Harley Cudney, Tom Collard, Ray. And I think that's everybody. There is another, there's iPad 7, so if anybody else wishes to indicate themselves for the purpose of the minutes, please feel free to send me a message and I will add you. And it looks like Maureen is coming in as well.
Okay. Addition or deletion of the agenda items?
Yep, so this is Kristen again. A couple additions this evening. We have the discussion of the ARPA funds. Some additional conversation about upcoming grants. Jessica had sent some literature to the board about a couple different grant opportunities and then I'm not sure if Keith is joining, but there is another roads grant that I wanted to make the board aware of this evening. Additionally, I thought the board might like to discuss the governor's update that just came out yesterday and how that will affect meetings going forward.
Absolutely.
Those are the three additions that I had and no deletions except one minor edit. I had put down the VLCT Financial Controls Checklist Discussion under the Clerk's Memo. It's meant to be discussed within the Treasurer's Memo, so clarifying that.
All right. Any approval of minutes from the previous meeting? I noticed that under the HO report, it said that Jennifer, it said that Jennifer made the motion to approve her to the HO position?
Ah, yes. I think that was supposed to be Jessica.
I think, I think it was me. I've, I've often been called Jennifer in my life, but I prefer Jessica.
Well, I'm, my apologies on that. I think I had, I had Jennifer Sullivan on the brain. For some reason, health officer. I will make that edit.
That was the only thing that I spotted in it. Did anybody else see anything? Guess not. Somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, this is Jessica. I move that we approve the minutes.
Do I hear a second?
This is Rich and I'll second that.
Okay, motion made in second to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. I'm in favor. Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
John?
Oh, he's muted. Let's see.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Yeah, I said yes.
Okay, great. And Bob?
Yes.
Right, minutes approved. Any pre-requested?
No pre-requested appearances this evening, Mike.
So, does the governor's statement come under announcements or probably?
Um, I wasn't, this is Kristen. I wasn't sure if we wanted to do announcements. Deb also did a nice job of summarizing some of the points that are pertinent to the board during her memo and then I thought maybe new business, but we could announce that the governor and the Secretary of State have, has list, has lifted the state of emergency as it pertains to COVID-19 due to the fact that the state of Vermont has reached over eighty percent of folks who have been vaccinated with at least their first dose. And that being said, all of the different rules and regulations that were adjusted, adjusted and altered due to COVID-19 as it pertained to the open meeting law, et cetera, have now been lifted as well. And so municipalities need to go back to following the longstanding open meeting law. This does include in, in our case, the case of the select board, this does include the requirement that boards need to provide a physical meeting location. And up until this point, it has been allowed that we could just meet via Zoom electronically, so I feel like that might be a discussion for new business. But at the very least, that's the announcement.
Okay, well, that gets us thinking about it. And when we get down to new business, we'll have to figure out what else we're gonna have to adjust to, to make it more favorable. They're very, they're very much stressing the fact that they'd like everybody to have electronic options. And judging from the attendance that we've had, I think that the electronic option is, is a very good, a good thing to stay with. Okay. Any other announcements, Kristen?
Uh, no announcements from my desk that I can think of. A couple things that I'll bring up throughout the meeting, but nothing that needs to go with this section.
How about anything from the zoning administrator?
Kristen, again, nothing that I received directly from Jonas. Not sure if there have been any communications with any of the other board members.
Nothing that I saw?
Nothing that I've had.
Okay. So Planning Commission, and there's nothing because you reported last meeting, correct?
Yep, exactly.
Okay, excellent. Road Foreman, did he show up or?
I don't see Keith and I have not received, as far as I can tell, I've not received an email from him with an update. The one thing that I had, well, we had on the agenda to speak with him about the West Polat stormwater issues, so if he does come in, that is something to keep in mind. And then, other than that, I'm just trying to pull up an email here. Bear with me for a second, but there is the letter of intent for the SFY 2022 Grants and AIDS Program is due on June 25th, 2021. I believe that I had forwarded that along to all of you, but it's been a crazy couple of weeks, so if I did not, I apologize and I will certainly do so. But the administration of the Grants and Aid Program has transitioned from the Agency of Natural Resources to the Agency of Transportation, so new this year. Vtrans will be administering the Grants and Aid Program with limited assistance from the Regional Planning Commission. Below is the announcement for a new round of funding for SFY 2022 with project construction to be completed by September 30th, 2022. So the, the letter of intent is due by the 25th, so the letter of intent just lets those groups know that Polit is interested in participating and it gets us into the running to be able to apply. Uh, we've been encouraged to participate. The grant money can be used to help us comply with the municipal roads general permit, the MRGP, and bring non-compliant hydrologically connected road segments up to MRGP standards. All of you are on track to meet your next MRGP compliance milestone, which is bringing fifteen percent of non-compliant segments up to standard by December 31st, 2022. And this grant can help fund projects on remaining segments you need to work on next year to hit your fifteen percent target. For now, we just need to get our completed letter of intent submitted. Um, and if needed, the folks there can help us to figure out which and how many road segments we could work on. So I know that Keith usually has a really great handle on this, and if I'm not mistaken, the project that's happening this year on the Harri Brook Road was also part of a hydrologically connected segment. I know there was a, at least the previous section that was worked on was. So, anyway, just letting you all know, and if you'd like to move on that, I think that tonight would be the time so that we could make the letter of intent deadline.
It, it would seem appropriate even to, uh, get that letter of intent in, because that's the starting point. And we've always had, there's always been projects that, that would fit in the application process. So I think that, I'm sure he has has projects that, that we could apply for, so I think that we should definitely move forward on it right now, so that we're not up against a wall, just with the letter of content, uh, intent, excuse me.
Okay.
Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay, it seems, I, I mean, it seems like that should be a a consensus should be quite adequate for that to apply for a letter of intent to, uh, participate in this. Is that something you do, Kristen, or?
Yeah, this is Kristen. I will work with Keith on that, um, and I'll reach out to him. I've helped him to do that in the past. It's, it's usually quite simple just to send the letter in, so I will talk with him and, um, Mike, I'll probably just keep you in the loop with what conversations we have so we can figure out what segments we might want to focus on.
Okay, that'd be super. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else as far as?
Just the storm, just the storm water conversation. That was on the agenda. That's why I bring that up.
Oh, and this is Jessica. I think that I got a email. It was forwarded to me and Sean from Julie, someone written to her about, uh, about Buttons, Button Falls Road. And I'd been hoping to ask Keith about it.
Somebody, somebody, I saw that email too. I passed it on to you guys.
Yeah.
I never, I never did end up talking to Keith, but somebody said that they came, I think it was their daughter that came around to where they replaced the culvert and hit a, because it, the culvert, the dirt was tore out or something, they, they hit something and blew their tire or something like that, so I don't know if Keith, Keith was copied on that email too, I believe, in the beginning. But I don't know.
Yeah, I went and drove on that road a couple times recently and I, I couldn't quite figure out where the pothole was. There was a bit of a dip, but I wasn't, I didn't see the pothole, so it might have had something to do with the rain.
Right.
Was the culvert there by Paul Sipple's house, Rich?
Yeah, that was the, that was the culvert that they had replaced. And, uh, you know, maybe, maybe the girl had, had gone through there before they got a truckload of hot mix. I know they, when Fuller was paving over here, they went over with the one ton and grabbed a pickup load of hot mix and put, put in there, so maybe that transpired between when, when they put the culvert in and, and, uh, before they got the hot mix put in there. But I didn't notice any, any major potholes that, that would have blown a tire.
They've got some cones there now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, I, I suspect definitely it was before the, the hot mix got put in, but I see that Julie has a hand up. Go ahead, Julie.
Hi, this is Julie speaking. Um, so I had just gone through there, I think the day before she sent me that email. It was after the hot mix was down. If honestly, it's not great. The dip and then there's like holes in it, almost looks like burnout marks, to be honest, like someone peeled out over it before it had set. So I'm assuming that that's what it was.
I can run down and take a look at it too and see if it's not safe. And get a hold of Keith, and if something needs to be addressed, I'll, I'll have Keith take care of it right away.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Anything else as far as the road foreman's report? I see that Dave Hosley has started mowing. The roadside's down by me. I don't know how far he's got, but that, that's another conversation that I think we, is, is the start of a, of a project, because I think that for two things, A, it seems like, what's, I think it's like fifteen grand a year now to get a spring and a fall mowing in. And I think that probably would be money better spent toward a new tractor that, that we could do it ourselves and, and have a little bit more flexibility and and be able to, to, uh, hit, hit projects when we can. I'm not really sure. I think we spent most of the money in our equipment fund for the new truck. Fifteen thousand was what it was last year Julie just said, so, yeah, so, I mean, five years, that gives us a seven, what's that, seventy-five thousand dollar tractor. Not sure if it has. But, uh, I think that, uh, trying to, I'm trying to read my notes here. How do I, how do I get to, um, this? Okay. Never mind. I was trying, I was trying to get to the point where everybody puts in notes, but seventy-five thousand is, uh, you know, I think is a good start, is a good down payment on a tractor and in five years, I think that the tractor would still be worth quite a lot of money too with, with routine maintenance, and I think that, I think that we should kind of get our, get our head and gears looking at something like that. I don't know what the rest of you people think, but.
I would agree with that, Mike, and I think, I think there's some, there's a place up north that sells, uh, used four-wheel drive tractors with the mowers all set up on them. The Towne Wells got one. We could, uh, I could touch base with them too and get some details on their machine, but the one they bought, uh, was used. It's, they're doing an excellent job with it. They can put a guy in that tractor pretty close to year round, um, and it's, they're really doing a good job pushing the brush back. As long as they take their time and, and trim it back and don't leave it all jagged and nasty, uh, those machines really will do a good job. I think, I really think that's probably one of our only options at this point with as bad as the brush is on our roads.
Okay, so maybe we can talk to Keith about that. If you're willing to look into getting some, putting some feelers out there to see what's available and see what kind of money range we got, and then we can see what, what kind of deals we, we can come up, what we can afford to spend and and look into that.
I can put that together.
Yeah, besides what, besides what Dave Hosley does for mowing the roadside, it would also be a benefit to cut all the branches back that are intruding on the travel portion of the, of our, our roads. So we could, it would be twofold purpose. Okay, and Kristen?
This is Kristen, and this is just Kristen, the resident speaking. Um, from somebody who, I live on Route 30 and sometimes the two times of mowing every year is great, but it definitely does get really high in between, and it makes it really difficult to pull in and out of, pull in and out of my driveway in peak summer, so I just, from the, from a residential standpoint, I do think it would be really nice to have the possibility to have more frequent mowing. Thanks.
Excellent. Harley, did you have a hand up or did you change your mind? Guess not, okay. Does anybody else have any questions about the road? Has anybody checked on the project over there? On Harri Brook Road?
Yeah, uh, Mike, this is Rich. I've been over a couple of times in the last week or so. They've really done a great job, um, as far as what I can tell so far. They, uh, they got mulch blown on the bank that they dug back, um, looks stabilized. You know, I think it's, I think it's moving along as, uh, as well as they had hoped. So, I thought it looked good.
Excellent, that's good to hear. Okay. Anybody else have any? Did you end up talking to Keith and all about the stormwater issues, Rich, or?
I did, I, I, I met with him over there, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And I was gonna mention it to him tonight that we should, we should measure up what, what we're gonna need for a culvert and, uh, and a storm drain. It really, uh, looks like a fairly simple project. Um, and he, he knows what we need for the storm drain. He's, he wants to go with the PVC, which I think makes sense. So I, I can catch up with him, you know, sometime during the week and and what I guess, you know, we'll have to decide whether we want to move ahead with that or not. I would assume it, at a meeting. Um, I'm not really sure how that all works yet. But I think we need to figure out what it's gonna cost us first.
Right. If we could get our supplies, I wonder it would, it would be kind of nice if, if we could move that big excavator that they got over there right down there to do that job. It would make short work and we really don't know what we're gonna encounter when going across that road.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. That would definitely be plenty of machine for the project.
Would it, would it be too much, Rich, or?
Um, it would probably be a little overkill, but I'm sure they could make it work. Uh, it would be better than, than trying to use our backhoe to pound across there. We got that machine rented. It'd definitely be worth, worth, uh, using. They could make it work.
If we could, if we could synchronize it so that, that on the way, you know, when we were done with it in Harri Brook Road, if it could come, stop there for a day or, or two and, and do that job before it goes back to Albany, would seem like it would make sense.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. And, and you've been looking into the, to some options to sell that truck in, in value and stuff like that?
Yep, I did. I met with Dave from the online auctions and, uh, so, so the deal that he offers, first of all, they need to, he'll, he need to know what goes with the truck, you know, whether a plow or a sander or spare tires or, or what have you. Um, and then, uh, you know, there's a, they advertise, we advertise, it's online for two weeks. And there's no sale requirements. Meaning if we don't get what we want for it, if we put a minimum on it and it doesn't sell, we don't, we're not charged a fee, so it's pretty minimal risk to go with these guys. If it does sell, they get ten percent. Uh, but they do a ton of legwork. Uh, but the part that I really liked is if it, you know, especially with that piece of property, if we decide to go with them on selling a piece of property and we need to get X number of dollars. And if it doesn't make it there, we can decide, all right, we're not gonna sell it and we, we pay no fees. So it may be a good option to try, you know, with either one of those. I think it'd be a good idea to try definitely with the truck. And I can't see why it wouldn't be a good, a good idea with the Spruce Gum Lot as well. So I can put all that together if, if we decide that's what, what we want to do.
Well, I don't know that we have a, a total number yet on the Spruce Gum Lot, but I, I think that probably that truck, the sooner we get rid of it, the better off we could be.
Okay. Yeah, I can.
Um, what?
What's that?
What does everybody else think? Jessica?
This is Jessica. I was just saying, that was a great time to be selling a vehicle. I'm trying to buy a vehicle and the prices are quite high right now. There's a shortage of inventory for used vehicles around the nation, so. So yeah, let's sell it now. We'll probably get more than we would in like three months or something.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a pretty big platform as well. So I think it'd be worth a shot.
Okay, is, do we, probably should put that in a form of a motion somewhat so that we have room to contact that, that guy and tell him that we have a just truck for sale and put it on his auction block and do we, do you think you want to put a minimum bid down or? I guess we need to, to?
Well, I don't think so. Because we can decide regardless, we can, we don't have to tell them we want, you know, X number of dollars for it. We can just decide at the end if we do or don't want to sell it, and there's no penalties if we decide not to. Um, they start, I think you said they started those vehicles at like a hundred bucks regardless of what you want for them. And we can decide at the end of that whether we want to let it go or not. And if we decide not to, we don't pay. And they'll even give you the, the option to, uh, to try and come to terms with the highest bidder. So if you're, say, a thousand dollars apart from the highest bid, they'll allow you to, to negotiate with the highest bidder and try and make a deal as well.
Okay. I see Frank has a hand. Go ahead, Frank.
Yeah, this is, this is Frank. I was wondering if you're gonna put this out with that auction type thing and you were deciding what your minimum would be? If that's something you can do according to open meeting law in executive session so that bidders do not have public notice as to what your minimum is? Just as a thought, and I don't know the answer to that question. Thank you.
Okay. It sounded like, uh, Rich clarified that by saying that we don't necessarily have to take the highest bid if we choose not to. So. Okay, so someone want to make a motion that we work with, uh, this company to unload this truck?
John will make that motion to authorize Rich to negotiate the sale of the truck through this online auction.
Excellent. Do I hear a second?
This is Bob. I'll second that.
Bob seconded that motion. Motion made and seconded. I'm in favor. Jessica?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. He'll start the process to unload that uh, oh eight Ram fifty-five hundred, so. Okay. And that's, that's about all I can think of for a road foreman. Anybody else have anything? Okay, let's, uh, go to assessor's report. I think they saw something come in.
Yes, this is Kristen. Um, there was a report from the assessor's office. Would you like for me to read it, Mike?
Please.
Okay. Assessor's Office Report to the Polit Select Board for June 15th, 2021 Grand List. We lodged the 2021 Grand List abstract with the Clerk's Office on June 14th, 2021. There was an increase of one million, seven hundred thirty-seven thousand, one hundred fifty-nine dollars to the Grand List. Of that, eight hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred seventy-eight dollars was utilities. Change of assessment notices and current use change of assessment notices were mailed by certificate, Certificate of Mailing on June 14th, 2021. Certificate of no appeals or suits pending. Please sign the certificates of no appeals or suits pending for the 2019 Grand List and the 2020 Grand List. Grievance hearings. Grievance hearings are scheduled for Monday, July 12th from nine AM to 12 PM. We we will still be practicing COVID protocol and will not be doing in-person hearings. They will be held remotely via Zoom or meeting, Zoom meeting or by phone. Mapping. All mapping changes for the 2021 Grand List year have been sent to Cartographics Associates International for updating. They should be completed shortly and returned to us for review. Assessor office hours. Lisa will continue to work remotely from home. Karen will continue to be in the office on Mondays and Wednesdays and as necessary to keep current with the office work. And attached to the assessor's report was the requested forms to be signed, which were the Certificate of No Appeal or Suit Pending for the 2019 and 2020 Grand Lists. And, um, this, the with the lift of the state of emergency, with that, I believe, goes the board's authorization to have Bob be the designated signer. So in this instance, if you should choose to make a motion to have these forms signed, I would just include who you authorized to have sign them. Just to dot the i's and cross the t's.
Okay. All right. So, but technically, right now, at this point, we can still, we could We could still have Bob sign them, right?
Yeah, and I think if you were to just authorize it, just explicitly authorize it in the motion, it would be fine, but the original motion that the board made. Last March to have Bob be the designated signer throughout the duration of the COVID nineteen state of emergency. That motion expires at midnight.
Okay. Alright, so.
Like Cinderella. I just, I couldn't resist. I was, you know, real real glass slipper reference there. Alright, anyway, sorry.
Somebody want to make a motion that? Because there'll be two weeks before we we meet in person the next meeting, so somebody want to make a motion that. That we have Bob sign that assessors report. That's for no appeal or suit pending.
Sure. This is Jessica. I'll make that motion that Bob signs those two um, forms from the assessors.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Yeah, this is Rich. I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made in second. All in favor. Jessica?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. So Bob will sign that for. For this uh, this round before everything changes. Okay, town clerk's memo.
Hey. So this is Kristen with the town clerk memo for June fifteenth. Good evening. In light of the lifting of Vermont COVID provisions, the question has been asked if the yoga group can meet maskless. We are continuing to require masks for office proceedings. As mentioned, we are still requiring masks to conduct daily business at the office as we don't want to be the vaccine police and we have at-risk family members. Keeping the door locked and we are also requiring appointments for researchers and are still conducting business on the porch when possible. A thread to the listserv put out a request for twenty twenty recordings and whether they increased or decreased. Many towns, including Polit, saw a significant increase in land recordings. I have attached an information sheet on the activity from twenty thirteen until now as a point of interest. Effective June sixteenth. At twelve oh one AM, Secretary of State Jim Condoleezza has announced the state of emergency expiration and the open meeting law. All public bodies must now comply with the long standing OML, Open Meeting Law. As it appears in one VSA Sections three ten to three fourteen. I have attached the memo, but here are the bullet points addressed in the memo. One, a physical meeting location for the. Must be provided. Two, members of public bodies may attend meetings remotely. Three, options for remote public participation are encouraged. Four, public bodies should review the open meeting laws advanced public notice requirements. Four, meeting minutes must be made available after five calendar days from the date of the meeting. Have a good night, Deb Hopkins.
Okay, so. The question of the mask wearing for yoga. How would that? The whole the whole meeting thing from Jim Condoleezza, did that say anything about unvaccinated people or so that would have to be only vaccinated people in the yoga group? And I guess they could meet in that open space. I don't know. What does what's your what's your feelings on that?
Well, this is Jessica. I think that since all of the requirements have been lifted. There's no longer any different requirements for vaccinated versus unvaccinated people. I mean, there's still a. There's still a suggestion that people who are unvaccinated might want to wear masks indoors. But that would be up to them to figure out. And the only thing that would concern me would be since they're still maintaining masking protocol in the office downstairs. That if these folks were going through the office, that they might want to wear masks, but I don't know if they'd be going through the office to get upstairs.
They shouldn't have to.
They shouldn't have to. They wouldn't have to interact with Julie or anybody in the office.
They would be able to go up the outside stairs or the elevator, which is accessible from the outside, not through the town clerk's office, so.
I don't see any reason then why they shouldn't be able to be unmasked.
How's everybody else?
This is. Kristen, just one quick add. When I discussed with Brooke, um, who is the facilitator and the leader of the yoga classes. She had mentioned that she would be completely amenable to if the board. Um, encouraged a mask until you're mat policy, so like encouraging folks. You know, who need to wear a mask based on the based on the rules and regulations right now, um. That they could wear a mask up into the building and then just take their mask off once they reach their yoga mat, and that was something that she would be happy to. Uh, request as well, so. Just adding that.
This is Rich. I don't I don't see any reason why they should have to wear a mask. I think that the state uh said that they didn't have to, so. I don't know why the town would would try to enforce that.
Okay, as long as they're not going through Debbie Debbie's area that she that she basically has the control over, that it should be fine, so. Um, do we? I I guess we uh, you need uh. Uh, uh, the board could just decide that without any kind of a vote or anything like consensus, um, because the word wasn't coming out. Consensus of the board is is it okay for the for them to be maskless up in? And their yoga area, as long as they're not in the uh. In the area of the. Of of the town clerk's office and treasurer's office in the that room, so. Uh, Jessica?
Yeah, that's me. I agree.
You're fine with that, John? You're fine with that?
Yes, same.
Bob, Rich, so, yeah, so you can you can let her know. That uh, as long as they're not entering through the 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 town clerk's area, the treasurer's area, the business area downstairs.
Yeah.
They they don't have to follow any of the rules put in place by the people that occupy the business area, so.
Okay, my last question on that was that I think it was. Two meetings ago, maybe, two prior to this one, the board um approved the motion. Or made a motion to approve the use of the space for yoga upstairs, but Brooke hadn't yet filled in a rental application form. So is the board okay with her filling that in and? In the event that she has a class between now and the next meeting, is the board still okay with? Her using that space without a signed. Request form?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just ask, I'll just ask that she sends one in just so that we have it and it can be signed at the next meeting.
Sure, but I can't see why we don't have anything else booked for the for the area anyway, so.
No, I. Yeah, I've checked the calendar and the only thing on the second story of the town hall at this point in time is just the. Library events, which as far as there's no conflict that I've seen at this time, so.
So sure, if she wants to use it, I don't see why not. Everybody else good with that? I I see no nays, so we'll we'll go we'll move forward. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the town clerk's memo? Alright, the town treasurer's memo. Julie still there, I see? Yeah.
Hi, this is Julie.
Hi, Julie.
Um. I just have two warrants to be signed. Payroll was nine thousand, five hundred eighty-three dollars, eighty-two cents. The accounts payable was thirty thousand, six fifty-three, seventy-one. General fund money is total twenty thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. Highway funds, sixteen thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars and forty-seven cents. And wastewater, three thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. Um, I received the letter from our auditor to sign and return in order to commit to them performing the audit this year, and I was looking for confirmation to proceed on that. Um. I included the wastewater collection for you to see the lev- the. Remaining levy that was just turned over to delinquency was twenty-one thousand, three hundred sixty-nine and thirty-one cents. And that's all I have on that.
Does anybody know what the NorTrax, what what they had to do to the loader?
Um, I I wish you'd emailed me because I could have sent you. They actually had a really good description on the invoice, but I I don't remember what it said.
Well, if you don't mind, if you could just shoot that out to me, I'm. I mean, it's obvious and you can't you can't even call them on the phone for less than a grand, so. So I'm sure, but I would I would just just curious. That loader's getting some hours on it and. Alright, so we got two things to vote on for Julie. For starters. Everybody's had a chance to look at the warrant over. What, how do they feel about the warrants?
Donald make the motion to accept them.
Okay, excellent.
Jessica, I'll second.
Jessica, we're socketing the warrants. Any more discussion? All in favor? Jessica?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion's approved. The next motion, uh, the next discussion is the audit. Do we want to continue with Smudget and and friends? That do the audit, right, Julie? The same people have been doing them for years and years.
Yep.
Everybody in favor of of having that all done again? Somebody want to make a motion that we send a letter of intent with them?
Mike, this is Bob. I'll make that motion.
Okay, Bob made the motion. Do I have a second?
Donald, second.
Okay, John second the motion. All in favor of having Smudget do our audit again this year? Jessica?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay. That's done. Now, we were gonna talk some more about some of the town treasures of. Financial control checklist. Julie, wanna?
Sure.
Go over a couple more of them or?
Yeah, um, I I don't know how you want to do it. If you, I I sent it to you all like two weeks ago. I don't know if you want to just. Ask me any questions that you have about it, or if you want me to just go through it kind of quickly and then as questions come up, answer them.
I don't have it very handy in front of me, so it would be easier if you kind of just. Breeze through it and. I think, how's everybody else feel?
I'm good with that.
Okay. That would be.
Okay.
That would be good. Thank you.
Sure, um, so we went through section A last time, um. So I'm just gonna go right to question. B, which was have the select board and treasurer jointly adopted an accounting, auditing and financial reporting policy? Such as the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Model Policy. Um, we, I I do have policies that were adopted by me and presented to you for your blessing. And those are posted on the website. I haven't redone them since I first put them up. Um. Question two, does the treasurer have? Written documentation of the accounting procedures used by the treasurer, the assistant treasurer and the financial or accounting staff? Um, I do, I have um. In my office, I have a folder with procedures that are followed when receiving cash receipts and other accounting procedures in our NEMRIC programs. And all of the monthly and quarterly reports that are printed are maintained in a filing cabinet in least until the audit is complete. Um, and then folders that store cash receipts, reports and banking registers are maintained in the vault. Until the audit is complete plus three years and that's in um, that follows the Vermont State General Records Retention Schedule. Um. Question three, does the treasurer have a useful and descriptive chart of accounts? Uh, yes, I would say we do. The chart of accounts is printed in my office and organized by fund. So for example, like twelve is the highway funds. And also the ledgers that are maintained in the office, um, which are kept in my office for the current year and for three years in the vault. Are all. All of those ledgers have indicated the. Uh, account that follows the chart of account number system and it also has the banking information. Um. Four, does the municipality maintain financial records using a computerized accounting system? We do. We use NEMRIC for all of our accounting. Um, we digitally back up to them at their server and we back up. To uh. A backup that I I keep off-site as well. Question five, does the accounting system allow for timely recording of financial traction transactions, easy viewing of data? And timely creation of financial reports? It does. I enter financial transactions into NEMRIC multiple times a day, um. Almost every day. And I can easily look up anything that I put in. And I can generate a report in any of the modules, so it's really easy to get. Um, and I can also export the same reports that I like. I think I've given you guys some reports that I usually print out for you. I can export them into Excel. So it's pretty, uh, it's pretty user-friendly. Question six, are detailed cash receipt journals and cash disbursement journals maintained? And that's yes, in both in printed and electronic formats. Are subsidiary ledgers, I, for example, the taxes receivable and accounts payable regularly reconciled with the general ledger? And yes. They are, um, so like taxes receivable, I mean, you have a. An example of that in the memo tonight. That's regularly accounted for, um. And the and also banking reconciliations are performed regularly and those are done by the assistant treasurer. And verified by me. And matched to the general ledger. Um, question eight, are account reconciliations and account analysis regularly performed and reviewed by a knowledgeable person other than the preparer? So yes, account reconciliations are performed by the treasurer and by the assistant treasurer and verified by the treasurer. Um, also, our auditor has access to all account reconciliations when when we're audited annually. Um. Are all adjusting journal entries approved in writing by someone in management? So this one is a no. Um, adjusting entries are made. By myself and I I do that without authorization. I don't know that I would recommend changing that at this point because these entries are used. For a variety of things, um, for any cash received that doesn't come through tax income or recording fees. So all of our state payments that come are automatically deposited and I use this system to put them in. Um, I use this system to adjust regularly a variety of things. Um, at beginnings and end of year, like prepaid expenses. Um, accruals of wages, things like that. Uh, monthly I add interest by these. Journal entries and if there's an an error, like if I paid a highway bill and I put it under. A general fund account, or if I just put it under the wrong highway account, I can make an own entry that fixes that error. Um. And then the auditor, when he makes his adjustments, I make those adjustments through. This system. And all of those records are available in the office at any time that you would want to see them and that the auditor would want to see them. They're available to him as well.
And and the auditors have never questioned anything about that in all the time that they've been. Doing the books and such.
No, um, he did tell me one time that that's one thing that they look for is like a lot, if there's a lot of journal. Entry of general journal entries. Then that is usually a red flag that something's going on, that someone needs to keep doing it, but I don't think that like the regular ones are more than. Um, what they would consider a lot.
Okay.
Um, and I will say I. For my own purposes, because I use these a lot to figure out. Things, I keep a really good documentation of what of why I did it and my logic and thinking behind it. So there's. So there's, um, there's a button that you can hit to add extra notes and I always hit that and I have, unless it's like me putting interest in, there's extra notes. For the most part, and I find that very helpful. Question ten, are financial recording documents, checks, receipts, purchase orders prepared in duplicate and prenumbered? So yes, our checks are all prenumbered and I keep any checks that are spoiled or voided. Um, they're given to the auditor, he regularly checks them. Um, I, we don't really use purchase orders. Um, and for cash receipts, I have, I have pre-pented, pre-printed, uh, paper receipts that are in duplicate. So I give one to the person that pays and I keep one for us. Question eleven, are all checks, receipts and purchase orders regularly accounted for as issued or voided? So yes, I. As I said, I keep all of the spoiled checks. Um. Question twelve, are all accounting records adequately protected against fire theft and manipulation? Um, I keep the current year accounting records. A lot of them are in a locked filing cabinet, not all of them are, um. But I think most of what is on my desk is stuff that would be stored offsite with Nemrick so we could figure it out. And then everything else that's from not the current year is stored in the vault. And I think that's the end of that one.
Alright, anybody have any questions? I see Frank has a question. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, Mike, I was wondering if. In the news is this, these group of hackers in Russia and stuff that come in. And get into a computer network and encrypt stuff and then hold. The town or the hospital or whoever hostage. Uh, for ransom to get the key to unlock the encryption. Does the NEMRIC have a program? Where this is protected from the town or is the town have to be looking out for that ourselves? Um, I just wanted to know, uh, because even backups can get affected by this, um. These pirates. And I just don't know the answer to that and, and I don't know if we've addressed it, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any comment on that Julie?
I don't, I don't know what NEMRIC has for their security, um. I can certainly reach out to someone at NEMRIC. I also know that we, we have a new IT person that is going to be. Doing some changes on our, um. On our cybersecurity, so I can talk to him about that as well.
Okay, it'd be nice to know, uh, I mean, we pay for the service from NEMRIC, so they should be. Doing the best they can to try and protect us too, so that would be a, a good answer, a good question to ask them. That would be great, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions on everything Julie's gone over so far?
Mike, this is John, I have a question, uh. Where? Where is the best, uh, this is for Julie or anyone who can answer, where is the best place? For us to. Keep contracts with vendors. That. The select board authorized by a signature. Um, by the chair or someone else and. The treasurer's office apparently just has the invoices. But doesn't have the actual contract. And we've looked back on. Some of the previous select board assistants emails and found. S- some helpful, but not the entire, uh, picture. I'm just wondering. Is there any changes? This isn't a fraud situation, it's just a. Uh, uh, practice. Um, and I'm wondering. Julie, do you have any ideas where the best place for, for that to be? Should they be in the selectmen file somewhere or?
Yeah, I would, I, I would, I think it would probably be best if you guys had. Um, a file called contracts that you kept with. Like I know you keep permits and, and grants and. You know, your own documents, I think that it makes sense to go there, um. And if I have, like. Sometimes I have contracts or I don't have the originals, but I would keep like a copy of something. Um, if it comes through with an invoice, like for example, I think I have our contract with Irving. Um. But I don't always. Get the contracts through my office, so I think it's just not a best practice to count on them being in my office.
Okay.
So, so there is a file cabinet in the back of the, the town hall there. Kristen, what, what is actually in that?
So that, this is Kristen, that is a lot of things that Tim had. Through his time, which I have slowly added to, but it's a lot of stuff that. You know, there are, there are contracts, there are things from different reports that, that people had submitted. There are letters that. Folks have submitted to the select board. So much now is, has not been. Paper. Also, admittedly, I have not really spent much time in the town hall over the last year. Um, so I haven't done much filing in there. Um, but I think that it would be smart to start utilizing that.
So there is the potential that we could have some area in that file cabinet that we could try and keep all contracts that we enter into and stuff like that.
Absolutely, there's, there's plenty of space and one of my objectives for 2020. Um, was that I wanted to spend more time in the town offices and like. Get a hand, I did get a small handle on that filing cabinet and I acquainted myself. With Tim, with what Tim had done, but I hadn't really had the chance to update it with my work and then. You know, we all know what happened, so I haven't, haven't been there, but now that we'll be. Getting back into that, I do think it would be an appropriate place. My only thing, there is one key that I was given. For that, um, I don't know, it's a small filing cabinet key. I don't know how it works to get copies of those made. I've never done that. But I would like to have somebody else on the select board or somebody in the town office to hold on to a copy of that key as well. Um. Just, I don't know, in the event that you can't get to me and someone needs to get in there. Um. So.
That would make sense that they're copies, so, but that sounds like a good place. A good place to, uh, have that. It would be in, in the select board kind of area and that. Hoping that somebody else maintains it for us.
Yeah, I mean, I think to answer your question, John, there is an exact place already in existence where it would be a fabulous location for. Things such as contracts, it just hasn't been utilized to its full potential. Um.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Frank?
Yeah, we had to fi- file a lot of. Contracts, all insurance policies are contracts. And there are some agreements that you have to sign that are ongoing and some are there, that are different. Uh, we used to have. Fairly heavy duty, fireproof filing cabinets. So that. That were guarded for a certain amount of time from damaging these, these papers and if the papers are considered to be critical for. You know, uh, talking about an agreement that was made and if ever is, those papers are needed, then. A, a general file cabinet isn't, isn't any protection against the fire, so if, if you're thinking this over, you might want to think about, uh. Uh, what would need to go in a place that's fireproof? And if there's room for it in the safe, uh, or whatever. Then, uh, or just get a file proof cabinet, put it someplace and use that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Uh, Julie, is that the end of that memo or? Contract, the controls checklist?
Oh, wait, there's more. No, that's. End of the controls checklist, um, but then I had, the final thing that I had was. Actually bringing us back around to that first section of the controls checklist that we went through a while ago. Um, you guys, I. I don't think I was there. At the meeting when, um, you went through the answers and then we just like emailed back and forth and there was one thing. Um, that we wanted to come back around to eventually, which was that we don't have an official fraud prevention policy. Um, so I sent that to you. Two weeks ago when I sent these answers. Um, and it's literally word for word, the VLCT policy, um. I would just change the, I would just change the blank on the bottom to. Uh, Polit and then put in the date and have you guys sign it. The only thing that we would need to decide on are the names of two people with whom, um, fraud complaints may be filed. Um, and I don't know, originally I thought like a, a board member, maybe the chair or somebody else on the board if they want. If the chair doesn't want to do it and me, but then I thought. If anyone was to be like. The likelihood of someone being accused of fraud would be the person in the treasurer's position or the assistant treasurer position who's mostly handling the money. But then at the same time, I also am the person that would most likely, I like, understand. A complaint. If it wasn't. You know, the treasurer would be the person most likely to understand. Whether or not the complaint was valid and where to find that information, um. So that brings me back to it being a treasurer's office. I don't know, I'm kind of torn on that one, and so I'm looking for your thoughts.
Yeah, how does, how does that fall into the checks and balances system? Right, it was a fat button, a chicken coop.
Right, um, which is, I think, and I think that's probably the intention of having two people, so that.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, so when a complaint is filed, it's not supposed to be that it's one of those two people, it's supposed to go to both people.
Well, in that case, I would think that Julie being one of the people would make sense for the reason that, that she just mentioned. That she would be the one. Who would have to understand the technical details of the financials if, if that was what it was about.
I would, I would think the other pe- person should be somebody on the select board. That would, uh. And probably as far as. As ease of. Each year, instead of having to change somebody each year, we could. Like make it either the chairman or the assistant chairman to her of the board, because that way. If that, that change, that could change every year and you'd keep having to adjust the fraud policy, but if the product policy was adopted that the. That the assistant chair or something like that was, was the one that the fraud would be complaining, you know. Uh, lot, uh, they would be the ones that are dealing with it, then, then it would be clear from year to year, et cetera. Do we want to, do we want to read that and sign it tonight or? Do we want to think about it for one more term, but we should make sure that we don't let this go away? Julie, you got your hand up?
Uh, yeah, I just, so I just had a thought too that, um, an alternative to that would be if you guys wanted to. Name a liaison to my office. And that would maybe be a potential, someone having more eyes on what's happening, someone from the board. Um, like. We have with the bank, we have it set up so that someone can view transactions without ma- like be, having access to the funds, they can just view them. Um. But it hasn't really gotten any traction, so I'm just wondering if maybe if we had a liaison, then. Someone could regularly look at bank statements and reconciliations with me, um. And they would be the one who would like. Gather any invoices that might be questionable, so that they can really review what, where money's going or some, you know. It's a thought, so if you want to do that and come back to this policy in two weeks or whatever, that's.
Uh, that kind of makes more sense because quite often something will come up and, and everybody's kind of looking around the room saying like, uh, who's gonna go talk to. And, and fit this in, who could, who could, who has time to go work, work through this problem and. Or question and see. So that might be, uh. That one person would be the, the go-to to try and work through any. Any questions that occur. Um, what's everybody else thinking?
Think that's a great idea. I mean, we have liaisons for other stuff, why not for the town, um, treasurer's office?
That would be the one that would, would be the point person to go to work through if we needed to come up with any. Any budgetary numbers or anything like that to see how we are doing or see if we could find money, it would always be the same person working through it. Anybody wanna? Want to offer up to be that? Take that position?
Well, does anyone on the select board right now have any, um, background in bookkeeping or accounting? I mean, I keep the books for my small business. I'm not an accountant though. I know what a ledger is.
Does that sound like a offer to take, take that?
I wouldn't mind it, I, my only, my only, um. My only hesitation here is that I'm already liaison for two things. But if. If it's not against policy or anything to do another one. I'd be fine with that. Also, I live really close to the town office, so it's not out of the way for me to. You know, if I needed to go down there to look at something.
How, how it seems to work out usually is if, if people have the time, it's really, it's, it's not like anybody keeps scoring how many liaisons you can do is. If you feel that you have the, the time that you can offer it up, it's, it's always greatly appreciated by some of the rest of us that don't. Seem to be able to get the time to, uh, to do that and, and I know I. My work conflicts with any possible time that I could get over to Polit to, to talk with, with Julie about issues personally, so we try and rely on. You know, a few minute, a few minute, uh, break type emails back and forth, which aren't, aren't always effective as they should be, so. If, if you're, if you're willing to be the liaison, I think. I think that would be awesome, you're, you're close by and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I'm close by and since I work from home, I'm a little more flexible.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Everybody okay with, uh, Jessica working as the liaison and then when we have questions? Then, then she can, uh, work with Julie to, to sort, sort through and get the answers that we need. Um, I guess we probably most effective if that was put in the form of a motion.
Donald make that motion.
Okay, John made the motion that Jessica be the liaison to the treasurer's office. Do you have a second on that motion?
This is Rich and I'll second that.
Hey, Rich, second that motion. All in favor? Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that I think is gonna help, help work through some of. Some of those issues, so now we have, um, we'll look that fraud policy over. And, uh, and come back to it at the next meeting. Does everybody still be able to put their hands on the copy of that? So that they can look it over between now and then?
Yep, it's right there in the email, I've got it.
Okay.
And this is Julie, I will put in, I'll put the actual, like, the name of the town and I'll put the date in for the next meeting and. The people that we discussed and I'll resend it as well.
Okay, so we could actually, we could have a written copy at the meeting too, because we can all sign it, because we'll be there. Okay, great, Kristen. Alright. So is there anything else that we can discuss with you tonight, Julie?
How much time do you have?
Is there anything else that we can uh help you resolve tonight? How's that?
I'm all set, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Yep.
And emergency management director, did we get anything from Bob this week?
This is Kristen, nothing from Bob this week. Um, and nothing from Jennifer.
The health officer, the deal is, is in limbo, did you?
It's good now.
Did you update that information that they wanted at July first?
Yes, so basically to bring everybody up to speed, I had filed all the paperwork and I was just an honest Abe and I wrote that I did it on July the second. Um, but all of the appointing happens on July, on the first of every month, so they couldn't accept the paperwork that was dated July second. So it needed to be re-submitted and then turns out scanning is not my strong suit, so I was having some troubles, but all is well. Everything has been submitted and as far as I know, we are all set. Mike, you are off the hook. For health officer and I believe that Jennifer is officially on the books as Polit's health officer.
But they can't do it till July first, alright? That's what I read.
Well, yeah, so you'll be, you'll be, yes, but we're all, we're all set and ready to go for them.
Right, everything takes over, but I still got two more weeks, basically.
Yes.
And then I saw a thing about a dog bite and I said, oh no, what bothers you? Care of it? I said, perfect.
So, but we're all, we're in good shape.
We're good with that. The wastewater treatment facility, can you read that little story from Jill, please?
Yes. Um. Hold on. So. Uh, the Polit wastewater treatment facility DMR submission files for May twenty twenty-one and the VTOMs updates. At the end for the past few months in one formalized document that was emailed to the select board. Or I forwarded it to all of you. Uh, Jill had a call with Bill No- Norris, P E at Engineering Ventures on five twenty-eight and followed up with an email asking for a scope and fee. For a memo that calculates how high we can move the tank pass through. Up on Tank Two in the front to repurpose it as a sludge holding tank. I don't think he has responded yet, so I sent him a check in today. Future priorities RFQ Jenny Oster is sending over a proposed scope and fee in the next few weeks with recommendation to apply for RD programming. In December of twenty twenty-one for the bond vote in March of twenty twenty-two. Not totally sure what that means, so if at any point in time somebody wants to explain, please do. Uh, these projects will happen in F Y E twenty twenty-two beginning as early as July first and wrapping up before the cold weather comes. Schedule replacement of air valve near end of Force Main from Spruce Gum Pump Station. Schedule Spruce Gum Pump Station repair and replace pump number one. Schedule jetting of collection system to get rid of solids building up to prevent future unwelcome clogs. As always, please let me know if you have any questions. Submitted by Jill Marsano, owner and president of Vermont Utility Management Services LLC.
Basically, to just kind of summarize that, Bill, Bill Norris is a, a engineer that's gonna look into seeing if we could. Just basically repurpose one of the holding tanks. And make that into a sludge holding tank without going through everything that Jenny Oster is, is trying to come up with her. The, one of the ideas is, is we could just. Change one tank over to holding and then just run off the rest of the facility with a much less complicated and. And much cheaper option than, than what, what uh Jenny from Whole, Whole Tanner is. Is working on, so we, we kind of have to know. What, what this guy would charge us to determine whether that building is, is structurally strong enough, uh, whether that tank is structurally strong. To do what we want to do. At this point without having to do a lot of extras to it, so. I don't know about you, Rich, but I'm thinking that we really want to hear what he has to say, because if we can do that. That option, it would be much cheaper than anything. The Whole Tanner has come up with.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree with that. I mean, the biggest issue right now is they just continue to recirculate the sludge. And the sludge is going in the second ta- the second tank on the, on Duquette's side. And it just, they need to get that out of there. And even if, say, that storage tank. Say it didn't work out, it could always go back to the way the system was as well. And it's definitely the cheapest, cheapest way to do it as far as I can see now to get that sludge out of the system and see if. If that helps uh remedy some of the issues that she's having.
Alright, so we'll keep pushing on that. Uh, all the rest, all the rest of the reports seem to be looking pretty good as far as, as what, what we're putting out for. Our affluent and stuff to, the phosphorus was way low, the poly's been good and stuff right along. So everything seems to be performing alright. And the only thing we're looking at is, is a pretty good shortfall in the amount of. Of wastewater user fees, so. And that's nothing we can really do with for there. Older unfinished business. Jessica, you add some information about the ARPA funding?
Um, yes, so. I am going to be attending the webinar tomorrow about how to use the online portal. Because we have to, um, we can now request our funds. And um, the state has put out the list of how much we're gonna get. Our total award will be a hundred forty-three thousand five hundred twenty-seven. And we're getting half of that this year. And so half of that is going to be seventy-one thousand seven hundred sixty-four. And then we'll get that same amount again next year around this same time. Um, in order for us, I don't have quite all the details, which I'll be getting at the webinar. But I do have a list of some of the things that we will need to do in order to receive these funds. Um, we will have to vote to authorize a representative to use the online portal. Um, um, the representative will need our Dun's number, which I know we verified a little while ago that we do have one. The representative will also need the town of Polit's taxpayer identifier number, whether that's E I N or whatever we've got. Um, and the address, well, that's easy. Um, they will also need our financial institution name, contact info, routing and account number, so it can be direct deposited into our financial institution. And the representative is gonna have to sign two different. Um, two different forms, which I did email out to everybody. One is the terms and conditions of this grant money, which pretty much just says that we're gonna have to do. Um, we're gonna have to do a single audit for it, uh, and, and the, we have to keep some records and that kind of stuff. And that we will use it within the, um, within the rules of this grant. And we also have to sign a assurance of compliance with Title Six of the Civil Rights Act. Saying that in giving out the fund, we will be in compliance with that act. So, I mean, I, I think that's pretty much just spoiler plate stuff, but I wanted to make sure everyone had those. So you can know what it is that someone will be signing. So those are the things that. Um, that someone will need to have in order to request our funds. And once we request the funds through this online portal, which we can do at any time, once someone knows how to do it. Then I think it's about four or five business days is what I heard. That, for them to verify some, the information and then deposit the funds. Um, Julie is also gonna need to make a separate fund in our accounting software for this money to be. Put in so that we can keep good track of it. So that's, that's the info that I have about it right now. Again, I'll probably have a little more information after tomorrow. But I was thinking that if, if. Because I'm learning how to use the online portal, if I'm willing to be the authorized person and if we voted. If we voted tonight to authorize someone and made sure that that person got this various information that's necessary. That we could apply as soon as I don't know how to use this portal. And then we could get these funds, um, probably within, probably before our next meeting.
And we have to specify what we're gonna use the funds for to them when we.
Um, no, not at the beginning. We get, we get the funds, we put them into our special, um, a fund. In our accounting software and then we do have time to decide what we want to use them for. We just, once we've decided what we want to use them for, we're gonna have to um, report. We're gonna have to issue a report after we've used the funds, um, saying what we use them for. But we don't have to decide right now and in fact, it seems. Um, in the information that Vermont League of Cities and Towns has put out, they have a very nice little graphic, which I'll. Um, I'll share at some point when I can get it, get it copied, but it talks about how. We should do good planning on what we want to use the funds for and that we should engage the various stakeholders. Which in our case, I think is most of our community to, to decide what would be the best use of these funds. Um, having, having heard the things that are being discussed, I mean, even tonight. Two things that this, these funds can automatically be used for without any further need for. Um, asking or discussing, they can be used for wastewater and they can be used for stormwater. Both of those are legit uses for these funds. Oh, I also found out that Rutland Regional Planning Commission has designated one of the people there named Eric Hall. As their liaison for these funds for municipal assistance. So if we have any questions about. You know, specifically about what we could use the funds for, if we had an idea and wanted to run it past him, he'd be able to do that. And probably if we wanted to have some sort of community input, like some, some meetings that community members could attend. He might be able to help facilitate that in, in making these decisions.
Okay, that sounds like a very, has some. Very good, good source right there to do some good in the, in our communities. So, to start with, I guess, does anybody wanna challenge Jessica to be the liaison? To be the one to, to handle the funds?
Yeah, well, if you want to do that, you gotta go to the webinar.
Well, I don't see any takers, Jessica, so. Does somebody wanna make a motion that we have Jessica be our? John, make, uh, what is it, our liaison, is that what the?
Um, yeah, an authorized representative.
Authorized representative. Is that what you wanted to say before you turned it on, John?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, excellent. Do I hear a second?
This is Bob, I'll second that.
I'll second the motion for, for Jessica to be the representative for the ARPA funds. Any more discussion? All in favor? Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, approved. Thank you for doing that, Jessica.
Alright, so, yeah, so I will, I will attend the training on how to apply and then. Uh, looks like Julie has said in the chat that she has that info about the financial institution and our. Taxpayer identification number and stuff, which she can get to me. So I will then go ahead and. Uh, do the online portal application for those funds.
Okay, sounds good. Alright. Other older unfinished business, we did receive a, a bid for that lot on Spruce Gum, but we still haven't decided what we want to do and. It's probably wisest if we don't share what that bid was, but you sent it to all of us, correct? Uh, Kristen?
Yep, this is Kristen. I sent it to you all and I did reply to the individual, letting them know that. You've all received that information, but the town has not yet um, gathered all of the specific numbers, so wasn't currently accepting bids. And that there would be ample. You know the word I'm looking for, we would make sure that we provided notice.
Right.
When that was. Thank, yes, thank you, ample opportunity, because at this point in time, I think that individual has reached out to the board. Perhaps twice now, but there is a, a good handful of folks that are interested. So that's something that the board will have to keep in mind to make sure that. Um, we as a town do a good job to make sure that information gets out there widely.
Okay. And other grants? So, that's out. We talked about the one we're gonna, the one you're gonna work on with the. You're gonna put the letter of intent for that and now we got the ARPA grant. And that's. That's it for older unfinished business, sir.
Mike, I've got a question. In regards, in regards to selling the uh, the town truck. Through that online auction, do we have a responsibility uh, to advertise that truck? There's gonna be a link for the online auction. And, I mean, do we have, have to put that in like certain papers or, I don't know protocol for that, I just want to make sure we don't drop the ball. Um, I'm getting the word out so, so the folks can get it, you know, their hands on that link so they can bid on that truck.
It seems to me that, that it would make, it would make sense to put it in the Lakes Region Free Press, which is the town's designated. Paper for, for that, so I think it would be a good idea to put to, when we decide. You know, when, when we get the, the, everything all locked in, we should, we should advertise it in the Lakes Region Free Press. To show that it's going out to bid, just so anybody local that had, wanted to uh, have an opportunity could have.
Very good.
Um, Deb usually will take care of that. If you talk with her, she can usually help you get that in the paper.
So, well, once I get the link and, and uh, get everything brought together here with Dave, I'll get a hold of uh. Um, get a hold of her and we'll get the ad out or the link out for everybody.
Okay.
Um.
Frank?
Yeah, along the lines of the truck, uh, when you put that out in the paper, which sounds like it makes sense that you need to do. Um, would it be something you could consider that you would also take written sealed bids? That would be opened up a- at the time that you would be considering. Um, the online auction bids, uh, in whatever meeting that is, that's part one. Part two is that the Spruce Gum property should probably have a, an auction format or a bid format. That would follow the similar protocol, uh, one way or the other. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I can answer Frank's first question. Uh, when you sign on with this auctioneer, all bids are gonna go through their site. Um, they, I mean, they're not gonna allow, allow you to have two auctions going on at the same time. Um, so when we commit to them, all the bids are gonna have to go through uh, that auction site. They wouldn't sign up with us if they knew that we were gonna be accepting sealed bids. Um, as well.
And this is Jessica. Yeah, I just wanna regarding putting the thing in the Lakes Free Press, just point out the, the timing situation. Because. Um, we, we have to put, we have to send something into the Lakes Free Press a week and a day before it comes out. So if we want something to go in for, like next week, Friday, we'd have to put it in by this week, Thursday. So I don't know how that would work with sending out the link, because I don't know if the link's gonna be live until we. Until we actually put up the auction, Rich, I don't know quite how that will work, but just to, to keep that in mind, that we do need some lead time. To put something in the Lakes Free Press.
Uh, and, and I can get some more details on that, I know. I'll get the link or we'll get the link, um. I think it's a week, a week and a half ahead of time, so that might be a challenge with the paper. But then the truck is uh, is up on auction for two weeks, once it starts. But then the truck is, uh, is up on auction for two weeks, once it starts.
If it's a week and a half, that shouldn't be really that much of an issue with the paper. You know, like if we got it on a Tuesday, we could put, send it on a Thursday, then by the next week, Friday, they'd have it out.
And we could even ask him to stretch that timeout before they opened up the auction as well. So I think we, we can make that work.
Okay, sounds good. Any other old or unfinished business that were?
Oh, um, this is Jessica. If we're still on talking about grants, I did get some info from Ed Bove about, um, you had asked last time, Mike, about that, is, it's the town owned lot, right? Next to the wastewater?
Yes.
And you were wondering if we could, if anybody knew about any grants for it. So I thought to contact Ed because he's with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and has been helpful in the past with grants and things like that. Um, so I spoke to him yesterday and he had a couple of ideas. One was that, um, that if we're going to get any kind of grant for that property, if we haven't already done it, we should get a brownfield assessment. That's to see, because I told him that there was like a foundation on there. Is that the spot that used to be that little shop or was there something else there?
It used to be a store.
Yeah.
Burnt down.
The one that burnt down? Yeah, I thought that might have been. I didn't live here at the time when it burnt down. But I've heard a lot of people talking about how sad they are that it's gone. So since, since something burnt down there, um, does anyone know if we have done any kind of brownfield assessment to see if it's contaminated?
No, because it ended up coming back, it ended up coming back to us through, through a failure to pay taxes and we decided to keep it because of the close proximity to the treatment plant.
Right, right. Well, um, Rutland Regional has money for Brownfields program. Um, they don't have any money in their program right now. Basically, they could do it for us for free because they have money for that. But in a few months, when they get their ARPA money, everybody's giving money from ARPA, um, they're gonna have plenty of money to do more brownfield assessments and they'd be happy to do one on that lot for us. And that would probably be a requirement for any other grant we were to get. Because say we were to get a grant to make it into a EV charging station or something, the requirements of the grant would be, is this, you, do you know if the site's contaminated? So that could find that out for us. Um, and since we weren't entirely sure what we wanted to do with the property, the other thing that Ed suggested is that in order to make a plan and a decision about what to do with the property, because there are lots of ways we could go with it, and there are probably grants that we could get from various agencies. Like if it was going to be something recreational, there's one agency we would go with. If we want to do something housing wise, we'd go with a different agency. If we wanted to do something with, um, energy like EV charging or solar or anything, we would go with a different agency. Um, he suggested that we consider applying for a municipal planning grant, um, through the, uh, ACCD, and that would be due November the first. Um, it's a grant that can be used to, to basically work out a plan for what we want to do for the site. And it could also then involve getting community feedback on what folks in West Paulette would really, you know, what would really benefit them from that property. And we could also as part, if we got that grant, we could then also possibly get someone, um, to draw up, to draw up plans, you know, to give us like engineering plans for what we would do with the site. Um, if we did apply for that grant, the municipal planning grant, it does have a 10% match and the maximum from last year was 22,000. They haven't put out the numbers yet for this year, I mean, for the 2022 ones. So, um, that seems like to me like a good opportunity since we don't know exactly what we'd want to do with it. And that would give us a chance to really go in depth on planning what to do with that site and possibly even branching out a little bit to plan for some downtown revitalization in West Paulette. As Ed was talking about how great a village center West Paulette is and how, you know, it could use a little love. And it would be kind of nice to be able to get a grant to look at that, that property, but also at anything else that might be available for West Paulette as a designated village center. So that's my, that's my report from Ed Bove.
Okay, well, that's really good. Um, one of the biggest things that we got to consider about that is the whole reason we tried, we wanted to keep that property was in case we need to do any kind of future expansion to the, to stuff that, uh, the wastewater treatment facility, we, we don't have enough space on the lot that we have, so.
Right.
That's, that was part of the, the, the premise for keeping that. So we'd have to, any, any type of, uh, improvements we would do to that site would, would be contingent on making sure that we didn't limit ourselves to possible expansions in this treatment plant, but certainly have a lot of options.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that had occurred to me was something like a, like a community garden or something there. You know, and you had mentioned maybe an EV charger, and either of those would be something that would not get in the way if we later had to put in another tank or something.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, good. We'll keep this, keep this in our minds and, and see where we can go with this. Okay. Is there any other older, Frank?
Yeah, the, when you drive by the property, you see the building and a lot of those pieces of wood have fallen down, there's nails sticking up and stuff. That should be looked at from a safety perspective. Um, a, and, and the lot is actually bigger. If nobody knows it, it actually, I think incorporates, and Kerjack said it, they had that parking lot. Goes all the way over to Egg Street, I believe. Isn't that correct, Mike?
I believe so. It loops around behind Ray's building there. Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, this is Jessica again, just briefly. Um, where could I find the details on the size of the property that Frank was just talking about? Because Ed was asking about that, thinking about the possibilities for grants for it, that the size of the property would matter.
If you go into that, that CIA map for the town, it should, it should, uh, do it. It should spell out what that, those property boundaries are and stuff.
All right, I'll check that.
Is there any other older unfinished business? Is there any new business?
This is Kristen. Just the further discussion on the adjustments that need to be made based on the governor's list, lift of the COVID restrictions. I don't know. Um, so there needs to be a, a location, a physical location listed for the next meeting, so.
Which will be the town hall, eh? Anybody have any reason, no reason to change any, any of that, correct?
Right. Um, so the, the memorandum sent out from the Secretary of State's office, just, I'll briefly just go through the titles. Um, so the physical meeting location for public participation must be provided. So we must designate a physical meeting location and at least one member of the public body, staff member or designee must be physically president, present, excuse me, at this location throughout each meeting. Public bodies with concerns about their physical space or staffing may need to postpone meetings or consult with their legal counsel or both. So, that's that. Members of the public bodies may attend the meetings remotely. So the members attending remotely must self-identify when the meeting convenes and be able to hear and be heard throughout the meeting. If any member attends remotely, votes that are not unanimous must be taken by roll call. If a quorum attends remotely, a staff physical meeting location must be provided for members of the public to attend and participate. Um, it looks like Frank has sent in the chat the, the PDF to the open meeting law. So a lot of this is the same as it was before we had all of these adjustments. Um, a lot of it also, we've all continued to do throughout the duration of this. Options for remote public participation are encouraged. So this is something that I feel needs some discussion because at this point in time, personally, I have no idea. I know we've been talking about this for a while, but I'm not quite sure how to execute that. Um, my question also is, is Peg TV going to be returning and doing the filming? Or is it still the expectation that I, as the assistant, need to be recording these meetings and submitting them? Just because if we're in person, um, I, I just am not sure how to do all that. So that's something to consider. Um, public bodies should review the open meeting laws, advanced public notice requirements, which everybody can do. Meeting minutes must be made available after five calendar days from the date of the meeting, which there was a 10-day extension, um, which was granted, but I've continued to do the five calendar days. So as always, we recommend that every municipality be in touch with its own municipal council for legal advice about how to handle specific scenarios. Also, it's important to remember that there's no specific verbiage in the open meeting law that requires any sort of electronic mode of participation. However, it is strongly encouraged because there are several folks who, you know, maybe don't have the ability to get to the town hall or, you know, might be physically restricted or so on and so on and so forth. So we do want to try to be as inclusive as we can. Um, so.
Okay, Harry has a hand up. Go ahead, Harry.
Yeah, hi, Mike. Thanks. Um, this is Harry. Um, we had discussed, uh, two or three years ago, the purchase of a, uh, large, uh, flat screen TV. Uh, I think this is probably a good time to make that kind of a purchase, which would, uh, uh, enable presentations to be made, uh, on the large screen. Uh, the large flat screen, but also, uh, help in the participation of people calling in remotely uh, to the meeting for the people act physically present at the meeting to be able to see uh, the speaker and for the speaker, it, it would have to be a, uh, flat screen with a camera so that, uh, the speaker can also, uh, see what's going on inside the meeting. Um, and I think that would also, uh, probably require a, uh, an articulated wall mounting bracket. So you can get the, the most optimum view with that flat screen. Uh, and it'll need, need an electrical hook, hookup, so. I think it's something the, uh, select boards should look into. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Frank?
I'm as confused about this as everybody else is. And if, and if, and if two of us are confused who have been studying the open meeting law, Harry's suggestion is excellent, by the way. Uh, then everybody else in the state is going to be wondering about this. So I'm imagining that, um, people are going to try and clarify this. As soon as I heard about this at the earlier part of the meeting, I le, I called up Sally Aki's, uh, phone and left a message. She's on the IT committee, wondering for clarification, whether or not the legislature had stepped in and essentially do, did what I was telling her twice before to do. And, and the committee was to make provisions for when the order would be lifted to basically extend automatically the changes that were made for COVID to incorporate the future. And that's my question to Sally, whether or not the committee is, was working on that or is working on that. Uh, or, and what the status is. And apparently the Secretary of State didn't recite any legislative change. He cited, basically, we have to go back to the old open meeting law because the amended open meeting law was a temporary provision having to do with the, with the COVID, um, um, thing that was, is lifted tonight at midnight. And, uh, if the governor and the legislature hadn't gotten together on this, um, maybe they should have. Uh, but we're in the dark right now and, uh, Kristen's questions are totally legitimate. I have about five of them that I'm not going into. And, um, uh, I'm hoping to talk to Sally and some others and, uh, get clarity on it because the planning commission is going to have to operate underneath the same rules. And I thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that up. John?
Yeah, I, I wonder, there must be technicians that can provide towns such as ours. Every town has a different geography and a different building and different ability to host these. Um, and I assume there must be people out there that we can find that'll help tell us, uh, design over the next weeks, uh, months, perhaps, uh, the hardware that we can use, whether we can get it so we use the upstairs of the auditorium, uh, which allows for more people, but also we need multitude of microphones, uh, multitude of, uh, screens and what have you. So I, I, I think, uh, that should be our starting point.
Okay, that's, that's a great, uh, plan. I think we should go in and talk to Vince Covino, our new, our new, uh, IT guy that's been working with us and see what he has to offer. But I know that, that we can't, we also have to have, with the big screen TV, you'll still have to have a computer to transfer the image to it. So the big screen TV is only the monitor. You still need a computer to, to, uh, work the camera and to make everything all happen. I talked to the IT guy at, at work and he explained that to me, but he said it shouldn't be a big deal to, to do that. They've done quite a few of them in the meeting rooms and stuff at, at work, so. It certainly has, it certainly is doable, whether or not we'll be able to pull it off for next week, but I think it's certainly something we should head to. Um, Julie has a question and I'll get to you, Kristen.
Hi, this is Julie. Um, so don't judge me for this, but every once in a while I find myself on public access television, watching other towns and their meetings. Because I just can't get enough. But anyways, I did see, um, I did see one recently that looked like they were already in a hybrid model. And so I would suggest that maybe you guys can call around to other towns and see how they've been doing it already because they would probably know, you know, a lot about what you would need to do.
And what town was it?
It was Mount Holly that I watched.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Kristen?
A thought that I had, um, back in my co, more conference calling office days was there was some sort of piece of, it was a contraption of sorts that sat in the middle of a table and it was a, a conference calling device where it was basically just a big speaker and people could call into that. Um, that was something that I had thought about for our purposes, if that was even something that we could get as a town so that people could continue to call in, like we could designate a, a phone number, um, as an option, just because from my experiences of facilitating the Zoom meetings, I just, as it stands now, I mean, I have had to run two computers and my notebooks and, uh, you know, making sure that a bunch of, of, I'm trying to spin a bunch of plates as it stands right now. And I'm just not confident in my ability to be in person, taking the minutes, figuring out the angles of the cameras and the microphones. I just, I'm just basically supporting what you were saying earlier, Mike, about contacting Vince and John, what you were saying to figure out a more of a hardwired system, just because I don't know that it's something that I would be able to do all at once, along with taking the minutes. Um, however, if we were to get something set up, I'm sure I could learn it. And then if it's all right with you guys, I, uh, you all, I would like to contact Peg TV and just see what their plan is. Because while I think that live streaming is really valuable and having people being able to tune in as this is happening and contribute their questions and comments is fantastic. I also wonder about, you know, going back to how it was before, where the meeting was recorded and then aired the next day, if that would be suitable. Obviously, it would not be live, live streaming real time, but just curious about how that's all going. just curious about how that's all going to work. And then the other thing is, I'm sorry, then Jessica, I'm going to be done, but my question too is if Deb from the town hall's perspective is wanting the doors to stay locked, people to be masked, all of that, how is that then going to look for the board in the, in the meetings? Is everybody who's in attendance, are we all going to be masked during the meetings? Um, also I'm thinking about the way the tables were all set up. I mean, I know that theoretically, everything has been dropped, but I would imagine, I personally don't know how I feel about sitting shoulder to shoulder. You know, the way it was before, everybody was very, very close to one another. I don't know if we're going to want to revisit the way the room is set up. I just, just, I'm thinking about a lot and so trying to put it all out there so that we don't go into this in two weeks. Because we have, whether we're ready or not, we all have, we do have to put a physical meeting location for two weeks, so.
Okay, wow.
This is Frank, which may be a solution, temporary.
Okay.
Um, the, 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 it's too bad the governor announced this today and the ball falls, drops tonight. Um, just a personal opinion, but the, um, uh, maybe the thing to do is just to say we're going to continue with the Zoom meeting for the next meeting. Or at least for the month, uh, uh, well, that's about the next meeting. And that we're going to provide a computer at the town hall. So anybody wants to show up with, with a camera going like whatever. And whoever wants to have a comment, uh, could, that anybody who shows up at the town hall could rotate in front of that stationary camera for, for comments and operates through the Zoom format for now. Um, and that might be the easiest thing to do temporarily. And then once Sally and the state clears up how this is going to take off and, and, and Mount Holly thing get looked at. Uh, but that might be the easiest thing to do is just to say you're, cause, cause right now, the, 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 the order, executive order is still under i- is still active until midnight tonight. So the question is, if, is, can the select board make a decision to do that, to stay with Zoom for at least the next meeting? And be legal because the executive order is still in effect and expires at midnight. So the decision you would have made would have maybe preceded the expiration of the order, going back to the old open meeting format. So you're still in the current open meeting format. It might make, be able to make a decision relative to that, at least for the next meeting. Where you would, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. All right. So we got some questions to look into. We gotta, we gotta tuck around with a few other places and see what we can, what do we determine? Kristen, could you see if you could find somebody from Mount Holly that you may be able to email or something and?
Yeah. I have that, I have that written down to contact them. Um.
Okay, then let me know. I'll call somebody if I need to or whatever, but I guess I'll, I'll need to, I'll call, uh, Vince Covino. I'll try and get that number from Deb tomorrow or something and call Vince and see what I can learn from him and what, what options he has available to us. And if he isn't a good source, then we'll look around for somebody else, so. Uh, Jessica?
Yeah, this is Jessica. Um, I, I want to back up what Kristen said about taking minutes and doing the facilitation that Kristen does. And also doing the tech would be too much for one person. So if we do move to a hybrid model, we probably will want to have someone assigned, and I don't know who, but someone assigned to make sure that the technological stuff is functioning. And also to keep an eye on what people, if we do continue with Zoom, which I think we should, to keep an eye on what anyone might have put in the chat. And to make sure if someone on Zoom has raised their hand, that we can, that we can answer them and all of that. So we might need another person to be doing the, the tech aspect of it. Also, I just did want to mention that even if we're not able to get, even if we're not able to get a fully great hybrid technological solution set up for next time, it would be possible for if the select board and Kristen and anybody who attended in the town hall were in the town hall. We could, we could makeshift it for one week by having a laptop sitting on the table in, in front of the select board members and having a microphone hooked up to it and just sort of having all the Zoom people on that laptop. It wouldn't be ideal since the audience members wouldn't be able to see those folks, but they could see the select board members and the select board members could see them and could then see if they had any questions. So I mean, that would be a, a stopgap measure if we need to do that until we got a proper setup.
We're just, this is Kristen. We're just gonna have to consider the access to said laptop. I know, I think that there's one in the town hall. Um, an additional laptop that's not currently leased. The good thing is we don't have to, um, I usually like to send the minutes and everything by Friday. Um, the latest Monday, but I'm going to be out of, out of the office this upcoming Monday, so I'm going to try to get, so we do have a couple of days before we have to get the warning out. Um, so, and again, just, yeah. Just a lot of fun little details to consider. And I mean, I just think back on how sudden this all was when we had to switch to Zoom in the first place. And within like four days, we had to set up a Zoom account and figure out how to do it. So I know we're capable of doing this and the, the memo from the Secretary of State said, you know, this has been a lot of transition and we've worked really hard and we've been successful, but I just sort of feel like there's not been a lot of guidance. And I, I'm, as I'm blabbering, I'm recognizing that we're at eight fifty-eight, so. Um, so maybe we can continue this conversation, you know, via email, um.
Can't.
I, well, my, you know, appropriately via email.
What we'll do, what we'll do is the, they said we're going back to the old way. So we're going back to the old way. We're going to have the meeting in the town hall. And whatever we can do to supplement that for electronics, we'll do. But if we can't do it for the next meeting, then it'll just be the way it is. And that's all it is. That, that will meet the state guidelines. Everything else is an option. Um, it's a good idea, I feel, that to work forward toward a better system, but if it's not in place by the next meeting, it's going to be what it's going to be. So we really, there's not much more we can discuss about it right now except to work toward a better system. And I'm sure that as, as the next few months evolve with everybody going to this, that there's going to be a lot of good ideas out there on the pipe. So thank you everyone for your inputs and, uh, and comments and stuff like that. And we'll be cruising. Um, is there anything else that we gotta discuss in, in new business or? Okay, the executive session, uh, we haven't been able to get the answers we were looking for due to vacations, et cetera. So there's really no point in revisiting that point and that area. And public comment, I guess we're up to next.
Mike, this is Kristen. I just want to clarify when I said we can ta- can, can, that we can continue the discussion via email, I meant you and I, not the entire board to conduct business via email. I saw that that raised a couple of flags, so I just want to say that to clarify. Thank you.
Absolutely understood, Kristen. I, I know exactly where you meant with that.
This is Frank.
Go ahead.
Uh, and public comment, I think that what you just said, Mike, as the chairman and what the, basically what's come through from the state is the default, you ha- we have to go back to the default that you just said. And the meetings at the town hall, the next meeting and any warnings that we have to make uh, to, to do that, we gotta do it. And then any changes you make, you make at the meeting at the town hall. Um, you're correct. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any public comment tonight? All right. Does anybody have any one last thing they want to say? Come on, come on, anybody? Nobody, nobody wants to adjourn? That's what I was looking for.
Mike, I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Excellent. Do I have a second on that motion?
John will second.
John will second the motion. All in favor, John?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming. Have a great night. We'll be in touch with.
Good night, everyone.